Give me a minute, I just.
Is there a problem with dairy?
Was there a problem with dairy?
I saw that, I don't know.
Oh, ADA requirements.
Yeah, but how, that's only a couple of years old, how would that not come up?
How would it not be?
Oh, thank you. Well, yeah, I didn't know. Somebody must have complained though.
Oh, is that what it was?
I'm assuming. All right.
Seven o'clock, what time?
Okay, here's the quiz before we go online. On page fifty-six.
You subtract four and add three.
Nine, six. What does it say?
They're talking about you, I think.
I know it, I knew it.
There's a red line through it, so it's okay. Welcome everybody to the November eighteenth Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Everybody's present. Reading acceptance of minutes from previous meeting, November fourth, two thousand fifteen, regular session.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
October seventh, two thousand fifteen, regular session.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Bonnie Yasik, Treasury Collector, signed Vans for Town Hall. Come on, Bonnie.
Okay, five minutes, we do a quick. Nancy, these are yours, the green, pink. And if you want to start this way, Chris, I want to pick some up. All the yellow ones are yours. At the top, there's one. Every other packet has four.
Just says sign it.
Yeah, that's, we're doing it all over for the town hall that we haven't bonded yet.
We don't have to vote on this or anything, right?
Yes.
Make the motion that we sign the Vans for the town hall.
Second.
I have a question. Bonnie, the new van is one seven, one million seven hundred sixty-five thousand two fifty. The one we signed off on, was it more? Are we paying principal on the old one?
No, the old one was higher, we were paying percent on the van. What did we pay down on it? That new amount is now at point six oh percent.
Not the interest rate, I'm talking about the principal. On the old van, when we, I know we had one percent interest. Was the principal the same, or are we paying?
We paid down, it was one point nine. If you look now, it's one seven four, one seven six five two fifty.
So the answer is we're paying, we are, we did pay principal down from the old one? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye. Everybody catch what that interest rate is?
Why not?
Point six percent.
How much percent?
Is that why we stay with these van things rather than bonding?
When I'm bonding, that's very small. Our bonding rate would be over three percent. You're not, you're not going to get many ditters, if any. I mean, that's a small, we're going to put them together with the police station, that's the plan right now.
All, all, all.
That's, that's my understanding from the last time, like, they spoke about it with all of us, is we're going to, we're going to put them both together. But right now, we got, this one's due Friday. I get my new money in Friday. This new money. So I gotta pay my old one off, which is one point nine. And then I'll have the new one due the same time as the, this town hall one is due. And see where things stand, and the highest I was to be, who's, I guess, you guys, will tell me when to bond it up.
We could end up doing this again, though. Theoretically, right? If it's nice and cheap and it's the way to go.
We could.
Whatever.
I mean, I don't know what's going to happen to that, and finance is a regular problem.
Yeah, it's pretty neat.
There's a limited number of times that you can roll a van, though, right? It's five?
They've been trying to change it to ten, but I've heard, I've heard.
But after the second anniversary, you have to start, it's mandatory, you have to.
And Nancy, can I just ask, is this a better rate? Or is this the rate that you would hope for?
It's a different trend, it's a different way. I'm afraid that you pay issuance costs again. But it's a lot less than bonding.
Okay.
You wouldn't want to bond yet.
The old rate for the last year was one percent?
Yep.
This one's point six.
Okay.
Yellow.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Did I miss it though?
Yeah, we both did.
If I come back upstairs, I should have a go on the side filing, then we can just sign it. And then, if I can get them all, get them up for soon.
You can't be sick tomorrow. You can't be sick tomorrow.
Let's just shuffle the papers.
You're saying we missed a page, then, where are we?
There's only three yellow stuff.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, there's two stuck together.
Okay.
Can't even see mine.
Let me see, borrowing, where is it? What was the original borrowing for this building?
Two million?
Two million?
Were you down to?
We paid it down.
No, paid it down. I mean, that's pretty fast.
What's it at now?
It's one seven, right now.
One million seven hundred sixty-five thousand, right?
That's one million seven sixty-five two fifty. But the next time, well, around up evening, we're really supposed to have a thousand dollar increments when it comes to bonding.
That's pretty good. So fast.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll give us interest.
We can build at least another couple buildings.
You just never know.
You know, act now, you know, while the.
When the rates are like, yeah, no.
When the rates are like this, act now.
Like I said before, as you're, this is the bonding.
This is the banding, what would a banding be? Three, three man?
Do you give me another one?
Right now, it's five years from the initial. So.
Like, sign away your firstborn.
So this is, when did we buy this building?
That's correct.
Two years ago?
Is it done too recently already?
I think so.
Yeah. I guess there's no sneaking around unless you can't.
This would be. Is this the second renewal of the van?
Yes.
So this is the second year?
Yes.
The third, we're going on to the third year?
Yes.
How do I know why you put my name first? Tell me I get first whacked.
Ooh.
They come after you when it's due.
Because it's supposed to be you, sir.
Oh, it was like always, no.
Good answer.
Well, you, I think I'm younger than you, right? Oh, gotcha.
This one just, you don't sign this, this goes with it.
This just goes with.
Little yellow sticky on that one.
No, there's no stickers on that, that's.
The keeping an order part wasn't, didn't happen.
Bonnie, yeah, you say, there's no reason you can't hover from behind.
Yeah, because the keeping an order part, it didn't stay in order.
She likes it all together.
I like it in the corner, to be fine.
These are done. I'll get this anyway, there you go.
The blue of the town clerk.
Oh, yeah, okay, but it's the same.
The yellow. The other side, yeah.
Yeah, I signed here. I've been signing that side.
Yes, I know.
I follow the lead of the others.
It's to trick you, keep you raised, and you're like.
Now, you're asking a lot.
Boy, that's a lot.
You're asking a lot now.
Way more.
Five, seven, seven oh five? You're asking a lot. For you too. You've been a long day.
Okay, here's that one. And we got one more to do.
Yeah, that one.
Sure, not that I'm slow, they.
I have my throat.
No, it takes, it takes a minute. He doesn't come. Just sign on the dotted line.
There's no dots.
On the straight line, Mr. Parker.
You're good, right?
That's it?
Thank you, thank you.
First on this one.
The first shall be last.
Ooh.
Very important.
That's right.
I couldn't wonder how many millions of dollars over the last fifteen years I've signed.
How many have you signed?
How many millions of dollars?
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go to the new business, because we've still got to wait till seven fifteen. I'm confirming on the appointment of Eric Manson, Insurance Advisory Committee for the designated of the DPW Union effective September, November twentieth, two thousand fifteen, for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider accepting the following Celebration Committee donations on behalf of the town. Project New Hope, Kyle Little Bench, twenty-eighty-two dollars. And Debbie Cooper, Marzini Bench and sponsor, four hundred dollars.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kittredge is here.
Mike's here.
Mike, can I come up? We'll get you out here early today. Sounds good.
Lucky you.
I'm here for the update on Mashok Way, is one of the things. And I went and took a look at it after we had the meeting here, and there are a bunch of cracks on the road where it's settled and stuff. I guess my recommendation would be we crack seal it next year. The biggest cracks, so try to keep it out, maybe shim it in a couple places. And maybe a couple years down the line, we put it in for an overlay. We'd probably mill the edges of the road, take an inch and a half off, so we don't have to do anything, just the very edges, and throw an overlay. But we have so many other roads. So I'm thinking we'll put it in for the spring to crack seal it, you know, just run the crack seal machine down it. And I got a couple appointments, go ahead.
I could just, do we crack seal, do we just find roads like that and you decide to crack seal them, or do you have a process that you do?
We have the whole process, we have the whole review done on all the roads. But I was asked individually about this road. My recommendation would be to seal the cracks that are in there to keep more water from going in, and shim the couple places that are low. And then, you know, put it down the road for, on a recommendation, to do an overlay, a little milling overlay, as we get further on in.
It's not by far the worst side street town, is it?
No, this is the only one I've been asked directly about at the last meeting, so. No, you've got a whole list of roads that are.
So will we, will you do crack sealing, will you have a list of other streets that you do crack sealing on?
Absolutely, we'll put together a whole plan on chip sealing, crack sealing, and overlaying. And the project on Newton Street that we talked about, too, there's got to be some drainage issues and some work there, too. There's a whole bunch of roads that I'd hope to bring forth before the spring.
Yeah, because Newton Street, someone did come forward, I don't know when, a few years ago, brought an issue on Newton Street.
Right, there's a lot of them.
So the driveway.
Right. I'll bring that up till we get it ready for February, so we can put some of these things out to bid for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get some soap off?
Yeah, I think there's two more. People do drive our plows. I think you've gone over everybody else.
The names?
And again, these are probably pending physicals.
I didn't see them.
Yeah.
We don't have anything up here with the names.
We don't have any.
We can't do them till we, the physicals are done, or?
I suppose we could.
Make it conditional?
Make it conditional.
Yeah, I think we've done that. Yeah, it'd be Steve, Steve Mulkey and Bill Mulkey. Bill Mulkey's plowed for us before, Steve Mulkey, he's, the first time, he's going to be plowing for us, but they both have power and experience. Billy's probably been doing it for, I think, four years for us. He works with the Beetle people, so he has, kind of winters off. He goes around for the ALB or stuff like that, so.
So what exactly, will it be a date, start date? What will be the motion? Just, is there a start date, an end date, or anything? Is there a pay schedule, is there a scale?
The motion would be to, with an effective date upon receipt of, you know, an appointment, with an effective date upon receipt of a successful physical. Physical is the only thing left, Nancy?
Physical and drug screening.
Right.
So there's no dates, start and date, and there's no money, money usually listed?
We were listing people in from December one till the end of May. And they come in at step one of.
We have a rate already, don't we?
Yeah, we have a rate.
Yeah, they're all the same, as far as the people that just drive the smaller trucks.
Right.
They, they don't do the CDL rate.
You want to do, make a motion provisional, and then?
Especially looking up the rate?
That's a question.
I make that motion. Hey, Billy's done this for the last three years.
Yeah, like, four years he's been doing it for us.
The other one, Steven?
Yeah, it's his younger brother, he's.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, there's one here that says, I don't know if this is the case, seventeen twenty-eight per hour, eighteen forty-six per hour CDL rate.
Right.
Pending a successful. So, I guess, we can just add that. What were the two names?
William Mulkey and Steven Mulkey.
Okay, William Mulkey and Steven Mulkey, effective, it says November two thousand fifteen.
November one.
It can't be, November one's over, so.
Yeah.
December first.
December first, two thousand fifteen?
Yes, that's fine.
If you have a motion, yeah.
Do you want to add this other stuff to just his? So it's seventeen twenty-eight per hour and eighteen forty-six per hour CDL rate, pending a successful pre-employment physical and.
Drug screening.
And drug screening. I guess I'm adding that to Mr.
All right, second, I'll second. I'll draw my emergency motion. This sounds much more official.
Just copy that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. I am seven fifteen, okay. Public hearing. Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirements of the general bylaws of the town of West Paulson, Article twenty-three, public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven ten PM for the purpose of considering amendments to the town's health insurance, portability and accountability, act policy, and the adoption of a procedure manual for the town of West Paulson. The meeting will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall one forty, West Street, West Paulson. How you doing?
How you doing? My name's Linda Benedetto. I work for the company called NFP. I've got something that's going to bore you so much. We're going to do it as quick as possible. Pass these around, everything?
Okay, thank you. Mike Ponder, the handle, very interesting.
The justification for, in essence, putting you on with this thing, I'm sure you've all read the manual and remember it by heart. We had it looked at by Copland and Page, and they've done some additions, which are fine. Basically, because the town is both a sponsor of what's called an FSA, and because you have been a participant, and will be for the next two years, in the retiring drug subsidy, you're governed by HIPAA, whether you like it or not. HIPAA's fairly dull, there's only about eighteen hundred and sixty-three pages to read. But basically, one of the things you need to do is to protect against, and build a wall against, what's going to become the HIPAA audits. They've been threatening these audits since the high tech, since the ACA, the Affordable Care Act was enacted. They are now scheduled to bring these things to fruition in the last part of the first quarter of two thousand sixteen. It's an audit that asks the questions about what you have to read here, is security rules, and there's something called the omnibus rule, which is the last of the HIPAA rules. It's been around since nineteen ninety-six, it's part of the Paperwork Reduction Act, and you can see how much it's reduced the paperwork that we have to do. But basically, what we've done is we've created a policy manual, which is an essential part of HIPAA. The policy manual is fairly easy to read, and it creates the wall that stops anybody coming in and saying you weren't taking care of my protected health information in any way whatsoever. We've put everything we've done, we've done the risk assessments that are necessary. The audits will come, it will be, they're the strangest audits I've seen, they're going to be desk audits. They're going to be calling people up. They'll send you a notice, you will have fifteen days when the notice comes to you to supply them with all the documentation. We have all the documentation ready to go. As soon as you get the notice, we'll put it in a box and ship it to them. That will make them happy. If you feed paper to the feds, they're very happy, I think. Basically, very simple. You have a HIPAA officer, everything that has to do with HIPAA gets run through the HIPAA officer, and then through the town administrator. The only thing you need to worry about is a breach. Cybersecurity is cybersecurity, but even the stuff you have is pretty well masked. We don't see any large portals or large amounts of information that would possibly be in any way, in any shape or form, useful to somebody sitting in Albania, trying to figure out how they can buy a porch. Are there any questions?
This, this manual, are we updating this, or we're implementing it, and?
You're updating, you actually got an original manual back in two thousand three.
And the strike-throughs are UN, N, KMP?
No, the strikes are KMP. This is our draft to them, their strikes. The things that I've never had a problem with Copland and Page, they're pretty, pretty good people. I'm not an attorney, I am a specialist in compliance. I've been doing it since nineteen ninety-six, almost. And, again, the whole purpose of something like this manual is to build a wall. If something happens, if somebody violates what's in this manual, as long as you have it in the manual, the town is protected from having to pay fines. As long as we train the people, and we do, and we will be training everybody individually that need to be trained. And you don't, again, you don't have that much information, so you don't have that many people that really need to be trained on this. Once that's here, we're never going to be able to stop people from not following the rules. But as long as you have the rule, you have a wall, you have a protection for the town. And that's the basic reason for all this paperwork.
On the strikeouts that we see in this manual, were you given reasons as to why those were to be taken out?
Basically, they want to separate, for instance, if you look at page twenty-two, they want to replace the word employee with individual. That's really, not even grammatical question, it's just that that's what they feel they should be using.
Okay.
All right. They, if you look under section two, they want to cut from thirty days to ten days of receipt of request for access. You'll have very little receipts for requests for access, because we don't have a lot of stuff that needs to be accessed, too. But the ten days, that's fine. There's no problem, it's, it's filling out the paperwork, getting it done in time, so if they, the ten days shouldn't be a problem. And they're checking out the protected health information requested in psychotherapy notes. Basically, there's now a whole new section of the law that is taking care of that type of stuff. And, so they don't feel that they need it in this particular draft. So the draft, I went through it, there are normal types of legalese, but the basics are still here, this is a wall. This is the town's protection against somebody picking up a piece of information and going to sell it, because you can get it for fifty dollars a line somewhere. Otherwise, there'd be no, no need for this. Next year, I'll be here talking to you about the Cadillac tax manual, so. It's, it's, but I can guarantee you that if you read this, you will have no problem falling asleep. All right, if you have loved ones who have any type of sleeping disorder, just read this to them, and they'll be asleep in about thirty seconds. Any other questions?
So you have to, you have a HIPAA agent plus a town administrator handles this?
Well, the town administrator, the chief executive authority of what's called the covered entity, if I want to talk governmentese. That's the person who would be the responsible person during the audit. The town HIPAA officer is the person in charge of ensuring that you kept up with training. Anytime there is a change to this, you need to retrain everybody. But we're pretty good at scheduling you for training, we schedule you for training every three years anyways, because that's the accepted amount of time that we think people need to be retrained and retouched. And again, it's all I'm saying, all you're saying is you're protecting yourself against that one incident where something happens. The penalties have changed on this, you'll see them here, they've gotten criminal penalties. The enforcement arm for this is the state's attorneys general. And one of the reasons I'm telling you the audits are coming is because the state's attorneys generals are getting nervous about such breaches as Anthem, Blue Cross, et cetera. And they're insisting now that the government get these audits out and done, so. That's about it, any other questions? All right, consider yourself HIPAA trained.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to vote on amending this policy?
Yeah, there are two action.
I make a motion that we amend.
Have to ask the public first.
We're going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
They have to ask the public.
Oh, any questions in the public? No one wants to talk about it? All right, now we need a motion.
I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we amend policy case six, number case six, to include this new manual that was presented tonight. The HIPAA policy procedure, is that it? No? Is that what we, yeah, HIPAA policy procedure, you know?
I'll second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
You said there were two items?
I, I think they were combined in the motion, and we can certainly extrapolate from the, from the public hearing notice itself, for the purposes of the minutes.
Yes, and that's for the hearing. All right, so why don't we do the, now, are people coming in for the search committee?
Yes.
Okay, so. Into there, into the planning board.
Did the planning board say that they?
They're coming until nine?
I mean, recess?
They're resessing the meeting.
Okay. Is Mr. Ekat not coming till nine, you think, or should we call him and ask him?
Yeah, ask him to come sooner.
I'll call him, I think he'd like to. Yeah. I'll be right back.
How about us?
Uh, what else can we do?
Do last.
How about us?
We have a town administrator report.
He's leaving.
Let me go back.
You have to get his report, hey?
Meeting invitation announcement.
Yep.
Mr. Thorpe?
What, what do I have?
Meeting invitation announcements.
No, it's citizens' input.
I'm sorry.
He's on vacation.
Want me to read that for you?
Citizens' input, for board for goals next year is welcome, please send your questions to jpercellawestpaulsonmash.gov.
That would be Jay Purcell, not Jim.
You're right, I'm sorry, you're right, Jay Purcell.
Mash dot dash gov. Yep.
Selection reports, that's what I thought we were doing before, I thought.
Selectmen's report, goodness, I didn't go to anything. Well, I just, I can report that last night, we had a successful, as you know, I don't want to take it away from you, so I'm going to pass it down to the chairman of the building committee for that, but I appreciate everybody coming out to vote.
Awesome.
I just want to report that negotiations with the teachers have started, and I've been attending a couple of those meetings.
We had, we got our match for the CPA. It's twenty-nine point seven percent this year. Nancy, you don't have that number directly in front of you, do you?
No.
Approximately fifty-four thousand dollars on our match, and our match from the beginning of adopting the CPA until now is just shy of a half a million dollars.
We have that information posted on our website, too, if people want to click on We have that information posted on our website, too, if people want to click on it.
That's a good 401K.
Dave will be here in seven minutes.
It'll be exactly seven minutes, still.
I just want to thank everybody for going out yesterday and voting for the new police station. As the board's selectman and the chairman of the fiscal committee, it's, it was a great honor to see everybody there, and we really appreciate it. We're gonna do our best to get this built as fast and as on time and on budget as possible. Again, thank you everybody very much. Jim, do you want to do a?
I don't have a, but I'm gonna give the planning board a chance to.
Okay. Future agenda items?
Well, I guess my only future agenda item would be asked that we try to limit the, oh, I shouldn't say this, number of meetings next month, so we can maybe, we've tried in the past, and usually we end up having five. But maybe this year, we're not out trying to sell anything and trying to buy buildings or anything else, so maybe we can have a decent season. I know we gotta have meetings because of the licenses and things.
You're gonna start off with a meeting on December first and a meeting on December second.
Very good, so we're right.
Well, there we go.
Right on line. All right, I surrender, I give up.
Spend the holidays together. I'd rather be no other place. I have nothing at this point.
I don't have a agenda item, but I, selectmen's report, I wanted to congratulate the football team making it to the Super Bowl, and also the women's, or the, the girls soccer made it districts this year, and congratulations to the school in general. Most of the sports seems did very well this year.
I would just ask that we, we received an email, I guess there's a letter here, too, in regards to Wayne's weaponry. I know we have nothing to do with it, I just wanted to make sure that this email gets, it came to me and it came to the board. It just gets moved on to the building inspector, to the chief, as she says here. It came in the email today. It came in the email today.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I didn't know.
Oh, okay.
You can test that down if you'd like. So I just want to make sure that it gets.
Oh, yeah, I saw this already.
Somebody talked about the noise, and I just want, I know we have no.
Two emails that came today on.
That's all. I just want to make sure that they get passed on, Nancy, to the correct groups, which I'm sure they already have, but.
They were copied on holos.
Okay, as long as we maybe can follow up and just make sure they receive them.
Thank you. All right, and I have nothing at this time.
Maybe I'll show you a journal. Oh, no. What's the next thing on the list? I don't know, I'm just.
We have to move backwards.
We have two items left.
Mr. Chairman, I have to compliment you on the speed you're going through this week. We have to wait now for people.
See, there, we had an estimated time of nine forty-five.
We should be out of here at eight forty-five, if we had everybody here.
Can I just ask, I guess, before, I know the people, we said the people are coming from the search that are on the list, Nancy, for the search committee? Are these people coming now?
Everybody's coming. I told everyone they needed to come.
Are the three, are the three top people staying on the committee, or we don't know that answer yet?
I put their comments in your agenda package. They had some questions for the board for clarification.
Are they coming?
Yes.
Everyone's coming, and we have a change in our department head designee. And that the name we're gonna be bringing forward will be the police chief, Dennis Minnick, and he's gonna also be here tonight. Their packages are here, everything's ready for them to begin their.
Who's coming for us?
He's gonna be here at seven forty-five, so we'll make a reservation.
Good, good, good. A week from Mr. Ekka. You never report, I do.
I'm right.
You know, science is golden.
So how is everything going these days?
Oh, no, you don't want that.
My feet have thawed out from last night. You were fine.
I was, I was perfect, absolutely.
Were you there?
Did she didn't show?
She did show.
Oh.
She pulls up, her and Paul. She's in a nice warm car.
We are on TV. We are on TV.
That's all right, we need to kill, Pat needs to kill some time.
I said, it's your turn.
What, what happened?
Where were you?
He's killing me.
I said, Sharon, you're supposed to be here. She goes, I bailed.
It was too cold.
Well, she does have a boat, remember. You didn't, maybe didn't hear that, so she's, but.
Kevin thought I was talking about bailing the boat.
Bailing, bailed out.
Should we recess before we get in trouble?
Thank you, Mr. Pat Crowley. I really appreciated that. Yeah.
Here's more.
Yeah, we can go on one. Good natured, Ripley.
Being the only female on the board.
What's that?
I said, being the only female on the board. I really appreciated that. How was Florida?
Should we recess, Mr. Chairman? Do we need a motion to take a recess? I make a motion to take a recess?
Because we will end up with.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll be back.
Sure you don't need something to eat?
No, no, I just have a prayer.
Yeah, um, I don't have a cap, because I'll have.
I have degrees in chemical engineering from RPI and business from Babson. I'm a fellow of the American Institute of Chemical Engineers. Have had a lengthy career with extended engagements with Monsanto, CH2M Hill engineers, and Irwin Engineers of Natick, Mass. My professional attainment includes 25 years of elected leadership and four board of directors assignments totaling 14 years. Some esoteric work such as on the management board for the Design Institute of Physical Property Research and we can put almost anybody to sleep. And for Wes Boylston's lengthy service on Concom Earth Removal Board, FinCom, and Capital Investment Board. Mr. Purcell and I have had discussions and there are two ESCO-related issues that need to be addressed further with policy direction from your board. The first is a maintenance issue. Our current contract with ABM has certain guarantees and certain performances required by the town. Town is required to perform and document a maintenance program to maintain, to assure that the energy-saving equipment is properly maintained and functional. No surprise. Mr. Galman apparently started this work, was fully aware of it, and had some discussions with you before he found greener pastures down the interstate highway a bit. Mr. Purcell and I in discussing this propose the following approach. Number one, using our on-call engineer to develop bid documents so that we can bid maintenance work for all town buildings and preparing an RFP. While I might be qualified to prepare those documents, I think it's only fair that I recuse myself and that the town would get better value and more open approach to the work if they use the on-call engineer or if he's unqualified, a suitable replacement. Number two, we have an approximate $80,000 bid from ABM solicited by Mr. Galman. That could be the best we're getting, but we feel that competition is a good thing. And although we are generally pleased with ABM's work, we keep our mind open that we may get a superior bid and a superior contractor, and we will only earn that with bidding. The bid will suggest a fiscal year 17 period with the option of starting on the first day of any month between now and then. As you will recall, we set aside a revolving fund of some $50,000 to $60,000, which we think is adequate to pay for the bid documents and some number of months in fiscal year 16 for the maintenance work. And what we ask you at this time is that it's appropriate for you to set policy and concur with this approach. We will provide periodic updates as more information comes to us, and we will provide a recommendation as to approach when we have conclusive bids in our hands. So, Mr. Hadwee, we think it is appropriate that you provide direction, and we are prepared to answer further questions and report back as you see fit.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions?
So, it's been a while since we did start this whole thing.
Yes.
Well, it hasn't been that long, but, I don't know, a million other things have combined.
Time flies when you're having fun.
So, the maintenance would be, they're maintaining the equipment, the new equipment they put in to make sure that it stays maintained, that we maintain it and we don't just let it sit there and break?
Yes, and the key thing is that that maintenance is done and documented.
Okay.
We may use ABM, we may use an alternate contractor, or we may use current town employees with proper documentation, or any combination of those, as long as the maintenance work is done and documented to prove we're taking care of the equipment.
Can I just follow? If we use the combination of all of those things, who would oversee? Wouldn't we need a facilities manager type person to oversee all of that?
Yes.
If we use that whole gamut of people, correct?
Yes, but that in and of itself is a policy decision by your board and the town administrator as to what approach. I perceive my job is to produce priced alternatives for you to choose amongst.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
I'm a little give you, I thought your job was over. I mean, is this, I know you did, I thought you were there to get the project going and that was it. I mean...
That was my job during the conduct of Phase One. I was the gopher, I made it happen, it got installed. When Mr. Galman left, Mr. Purcell and I worked together to identify what the missing pieces are, to bring them to your attention, and to get further direction. My feelings are not hurt if you find somebody other than me to carry this work. The point we make is this work must be done to ensure your guarantee.
Right, yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, I don't think, I don't know what your pay is, you're not getting paid for what you're doing.
Okay.
You were paid once, so I'm not trying to hurt your feelings, I'm saying why, I mean, I don't expect you to work forever for this project.
No, it is, I volunteer and expect to give the town 100 hours of my time every year, and I work through your board and the town administrator to figure out where you get the best value. And right now, the best value is to help you through what should we do about these two problems.
I think we should go to bid, no question, and I think we are talking about getting a facility manager.
We have discussed that, yes.
Right, that's one of, so this is going to be one thing added to his list of duties when we do.
And should you hire one while this body of work is in progress, I will gracefully hand off to he or she.
So, right now, the maintenance, the required maintenance is being done by ABM on a contract basis?
Best guess is it isn't being done.
So, what, and that maintenance is a necessity in order for us to get the guarantee, which they're going to owe us money, the price of oil is a third of what it was when they did their projections. I would imagine we're not going to get the savings that were guaranteed. Is that an accurate statement?
You and I use the same bookie, yes.
Okay, so, are we in any jeopardy because for the past three months, we haven't had this in place?
The official completion date was either April 30th or May 1st, and it's annual maintenance, checking bearings, replacing filters, yada, yada, yada. So, I would really get concerned if we get past the 1st of May without doing annual maintenance.
Okay, so...
Yeah, okay.
I believe it came with a one-year maintenance warranty, didn't it?
There is a lot of, there is always a lot of maintenance built into the first year of rotating equipment such as boilers, yes.
So, we get this by April 1st, when you say it's going to be in place by April 1st to do this.
But we do have money set aside, correct?
Yes.
Do we have money in an account now?
Okay, we have, at the last town meeting, we set up a revolving fund of $50,000 to $60,000 that was the proceeds of the rebates from the gas company.
Okay.
And Mr. Galman's impression was that, and the language in the article was for just these things, to pay for some initial maintenance and to provide engineering oversight to make it happen. That oversight could be having the on-call engineer prepare bid documents.
So, with that money, we could start, I don't know how to even do this, we could hire a maintenance person, say, I'm just saying, for the boilers. We could hire ABC Company to come in and check the boilers.
We can do that.
Kind of piecemeal until we figure out where we're going.
So...
Is that right? No, I'm...
Yes, that's right, but Mr. Purcell obviously is the town's chief procurement officer. I am a technical advisor on call. A vision is that we will quote it for a full fiscal year and fund it through FY17 budgeting and ask for clauses to say how much per month would it cost between now and June 30th, and as soon as we can make this happen, start the maintenance program so that you get continuity. But you have the prerogative of telling Mr. Purcell and I that there's a better approach, and we'll take that approach.
I'm not sure what the approach is, maybe you clarify this whole...
I don't feel unsafe under the present circumstances. David said the completion date of the project took place, you know, just a few months ago, and we, you know, we're still inside that window. We had considered bringing some action forward for the October town meeting, but, you know, the steps that Dave has laid out, you know, took place between he and I, and actually, he's been communicating with a great many people. This project path is laid out in this fashion, I think rather smartly. I think Dave has, you know, taken a real leadership role in this thing for taking this out. Now, he did mention that ABM did submit maintenance proposals very, very early on in the, after the project completion process. We actually compared those prices. They quoted other buildings as well, this building, the library building, and we found that our existing maintenance agreements on those two facilities that I mentioned were significantly less expensive than ABM's. The scopes we believe to be, if not mirror images, you know, very similar to one another. And so, that's why we really want to test the market here. Instead of just asking you to make contract of water or prove, you know, some sort of a relationship with ABM, let's test the market here and see how, you know, how well or how poorly we can do. So, that's step, you know, that's step one, the maintenance business covering Phase One of the project. Dave is here also to talk about a possible Phase Two of the project, but, you know, for the moment, I think what we're looking for is a nod, you know, from you on this maintenance business. Yes, proceed down this path that you've proposed and come back to us when you reach some sort of a milestone, you know, for, you know, for the next step.
So, in other words, if I understand this, what you're saying is that you put together an RFP to go out and get a maintenance, somebody to do the maintenance on these, all these things we put in, all this equipment, et cetera, sets of programs that we put in, and then you come back to us and, ABM, I thought it was like $80,000 or whatever, or whatever it was.
The combined sum, yeah.
Or whatever. I don't remember now, but whatever their number was, and you'd come back and say, here's the bid. ABM might rebid also, I'm assuming.
Oh, I'm sure they would.
It's an open bid, anybody can bid again.
Yeah.
So, then you come to us and say, okay, we found this XYZ company would be the best to take it at this point. Then, we had some discussion already about having a facilities manager, and we still need to do a lot more talking with the schools because we want to include everything.
I see.
And if we did that, then that person could then step in, look at this company that we hired for, I don't know, in the short term, long term, whatever term you suggest or looks best to us, and then they would take that over and maintain or keep that same company, and they would just, they'd maintain the contract, right?
They could be a bridge. They could be a bridge. If you're interested in a facilities manager for general government and school facilities, I did the very same thing in North Andover about three years ago, and that is entirely possible.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we would, that's where you're saying we'd be now. Get the on-call engineer to write up an RFP if he's capable. Come back, look at, we look at the RFP, we agree, goes out to bid, we get back some bids, we decide, we hire XYZ company, and they start doing the maintenance, and it's all documented.
Bingo.
Correct, is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay, we have the money to pay for that.
My only concern is that ABM comes back and they say, and we get told, okay, yeah, you didn't award us the maintenance contract, and you didn't adjust the widget on this boiler, so we're not going to give you the, you know, the kicker that you're supposed to get because you didn't get the guaranteed savings. Do we have a user's manual on exactly what needs to be done?
No, number one, we have a user's manual on everything. Number two, if it's permissible under mass procurement law, as I would get comments on the RFP from ABM before I finalize them.
Okay, I don't exactly understand what you just said, but all I would ask that is that we have in writing from ABM that we're still within the timeframe, that within this year, so we're covered under all of our warranties and everything from them, that we're still, if we don't hire this person till May or till April, I don't know when it's going to be, you said...
I'm sure that already exists, but...
Yeah, well, that's, I just, what Mr. Crowley said, and I think we just want it in here, and so we're not just guessing.
We will dot the i's, cross the t's, and recall that the number of decades I have been doing work such as this and making engineering inquiries is more than one.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to make sure where we, town council agrees that we're all, and now after we spend this little bit of money for the, the amount of money for the engineer to write up the documents, that $60,000 that's in the revolving account, we could, I don't think we'll ever really be using it again, because maintenance is going to be paid far out of the savings. Is that where the maintenance gets paid?
It'll go into the revolving account, correct? Any savings.
My understanding is that's the receiving account, is that?
Oh, no, all the savings goes to the, all your account or just to the general?
Well...
Okay.
Go ahead.
You'll have to get into the letter of the accounting, but my understanding is the revolving account is to pay for engineering, verification, and possible maintenance through June 30th of 16.
Yeah, then it's, then that account's over.
And we will have bids to show us what the cost per year will be soon enough for them to be built into the 17 budgets to pay for the necessary maintenance.
Because the savings, yeah, the savings, the revolving, the money, the savings just goes right into the general fund.
It really doesn't come into anything, it just doesn't go out of there.
It's a savings.
The revolving account was set up when we had the $50,000, I think it was 50, the $50,000 rebate from the gas company. Leon said, hey...
Put it there for this issue.
We don't know, what we don't know yet, let's set up a revolving fund to take care of any unknown issues, the maintenance being the big unknown.
Right.
It'll never be replenished unless we decide to appropriate more funds into it.
And then in June, we could possibly, but the...
Yeah, set up another revolving fund.
Or we could just close it if we don't need it.
Right.
But now this 60 or 80, this $80,000.
60.
No, the 80,000 that possibly for this person to maintain it, how does that get paid? Out of split, a split with the school budget?
Appropriations in the fiscal 17 operating budget.
Yeah, so that would be just like, yeah, it would have to be just like...
Unless we have this facilities manager, and he would have a budget that would include, I'm assuming he would have a budget that would do all of that, one big budget, because he's going to pay the bills, rather than the school pay a bill and then us pay a bill and he's paying the bills, and I don't know how you...
Or some hybrid, some hybrid of the above.
Well, I think the bottom line is that we're going to get a couple of bids to do this before we do anything.
And that's what we need to know.
I'd like to take three or four steps.
Right.
Give us a nod to take the next three or four steps.
Oh, I think we should go to bid, no question.
Yeah, so who needs to make that motion?
I make a motion that you get the RFP and put out the bid and...
Come back.
Come back, and then we'll go from there, how's that sound?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Page, part two.
Part two is, we said, and possibly not loud enough, that the Phase One ESCO project, which was completed on about May 1st of this year, was scoped only to do the things that could be paid for out of savings. And that came up with a $3 million project that did a lot of good things, and the school department can't say enough good things about what you've done for them, that the quality of life has improved markedly in the schools. There are some funky little teething problems that we've worked out, the most amusing of which was like in the kindergarten, the thermostat at 3:00 AM says it's too cold in here, so the thermostat turns on the heating system. The heating system blows air, that makes the cut-out dolls on the wall move, the light center picks them up and turns on the lights. The lights stay on for 25 minutes, go off at 3:25, the thermostat tells them to come back on at 3:28. So, okay, but ABM gave us an unsolicited proposal for about $625,000 to do control work in the classrooms, middle school, high school. Prior to this project, all of the control systems were pneumatic, that you use air pressure to control instruments in the HVAC system. We shan't discuss when I graduated from college, but this was old technology at that time and has probably not been used in new construction for 30 or 35 years. The problem with this technology is that the ductwork, the tubing gets tired, it fails, all the tubing's in the walls, and you have to dig through the walls, it's unreliable, shuts down, yada, yada, yada. It's either at or past the end of its useful life. So, anyway, we are, we are working on the scope for a Phase Two ESCO project in concert with Roger Pompriand, the business manager at the schools, Jim Piddon, school committee is about to join the team. It looks like a $625,000, give or take, project. The next step is to verify with town council, the same attorney as who advised us on Phase One. A, does this qualify as an ESCO project? B, does ABM remain qualified or do they have to be re-qualified? Jim is working his trap lines with town council, and they're overdue for a response, so we'll get on to that. We are also working on identifying additional savings, which could be new energy savings from the new project. There are undocumented waiver savings from the first project that the schools are working on documenting. For instance, the system fails about 5% as often as before, so nobody has to get out of bed and come in and turn it back on. Not only that, with digital controls, we gave the lead maintenance people iPhones. So, before they go to bed, they turn on the iPhone, dial in the number, and verify that the HVAC system is working just fine, go to bed, and when they get up, they check again, it's working, and so it works a lot better. The current HVAC contractor has already verified that this seems to be the right scope of work. So, we have energy savings unclaimed from the first round, which may be zero, we have new energy savings, we have old waiver savings, we have new waiver savings. Still, it's going to have some cost, and what we're asking you to do is to bring this forward as a possible project for consideration at the May town meeting to see if we'd like to go forward for $625,000, and just think of it as a fifth of the cost of what we did the first time, and this is work that appears to be badly needed. In executing the project, the right day to start the project is the Monday after school gets out for summer recess, pick your favorite year to do it in. So, the question for us to decide collectively between this evening and finishing the warrant date for the May town meeting is Monday, June something, 2016, in the best interests of the schools and the town to do it this year, and we need to do our homework to answer questions to what the cost, what the benefit is, so we can collectively make an intelligent decision on moving forward or not.
Thank you, Dave.
Just, now, that was for the school and the classrooms. Now, this building was never included in the original ESCO project, correct?
This...
And then new police station.
This school, this building was never formally included because we didn't own it when we started the project, okay? Is whoever the chosen contractor is can be asked to add this building to see if there's any savings. They will, there was a general impression that this had modern, energy-efficient utilities, the expectation is, but we can take a look at it. On the new police station, your engineer architect, as part of his bid documents for construction, should write those provisions into the bid documents and specifications, and then the future facility manager should follow up and managing them appropriately. New construction is almost always easy to save money on, it's the existing buildings. It's the existing buildings, such as the schools, that are several decades old, where it's hard to go out and really save money.
I just didn't know if we could add like this to that school thing and have this building part of the whole program. Then we'd have every building in town, just as I recall, it would now have been done by, under an ESCO program.
Mr. McCormick, thank you for your input. And when we identify the appropriate ESCO contractor, we will, we will take a look to see if there's anything else in existing town properties that needs to be revisited.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right. So for now.
The, you're saying you're, you're looking at it to see if the new controls can fall under the ESCO. What's your preliminary take on it? Is it, are we going to see enough savings that we can go down that road without having to deal with two and a half?
Okay, is, please understand that I'm a registered engineer and not a member of the bar. Okay. ABM opines that if there are above a minimum savings, it can be done as an ESCO project. It, it's, it's just that the savings will not be enough to pay for all, and that the town would have to contribute to the funding, either lump sum or as, as an annual payment. ABM likes to do 15-year mortgage financing. But once we narrow in on what we're going to do, what it's going to cost, then we can start exploring funding options.
The reason I ask is, if we're going to move forward with this at May Town Meeting, it would be a whole heck of a lot easier if we could get it under an ESCO project where, you know, it doesn't have to go through the whole process of approval at Town Meeting for funding. Similar to the police station you just did.
This, this, this is why we, we asked for opinion of Town Council four to six weeks ago. And we need to rattle their cage and get a response.
Well, I think it's, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it's safe to say that the savings will not cover it, because if it was, they would have put it in the first project.
Correct.
So there's going to be some, some amount of money we're going to need to pay out of this.
Yes.
So, I don't, I think we should just hold on that right now.
I think.
Personally.
I don't think there's any action taken right now. We should talk about it.
You're looking into it and that's where we are at this point. You're going to come back to us with a.
Okay, what, what, okay. Your board sets policy for the town. It is a policy decision to allow the town administrator and us in the energy savings community to take a look at this and to get enough additional information to see what the cost, benefit, and legal options are and whether we are collectively interested in pursuing this for the May Town Meeting or not. We would expect to make a presentation and a recommendation in a timely fashion so that if we wanted to move forward, it makes the closing date for the warrant for the May Town Meeting. So this is just information gathered.
So at this point, we're waiting to hear, or you're waiting to hear from the lawyers to see if it will fall. That, to me, that's the first step. If they come back and say, yes, it's going to fall into this category, that might put a different perspective on it. And we need to know that information before we can decide what to do in going forward, in my estimation.
Yeah, it, it, is we need to know the cost. We need, we need to know the benefit, and we need to know the legal. And we are, we are concurrently exploring all three so that, so that they can come together late March, early April, so that we can make a policy decision as to what's, what's best for the town and the schools. So I assume in the future we'll hear some kind of opinion from the.
Yeah, it was actually, it was just before I went, I went out of state, so that was about, it was between two and, uh, three weeks ago. Among the other things that Dave and I did, I'd asked him to frame that ESCO question and another for council. Frame it to me in the form of an email, which, copying Dave, I passed on to council, asking them to, to consider these questions and to work with Dave. It was open in the portal, so to speak, for, you know, for use of Town Council to, to Dave. So it's been, probably has been three weeks.
So at a future meeting, you will let us know what's going on and.
Sure.
We'll go from there.
So I, yeah, I just, I mean, I, I think if we're going to hire a facilities person, they may be able to tell us if this is the route we should go. Or if this is, you know, if we want to spend the $600,000 to maybe only save $50,000. I don't know the answer. I mean, it should probably be done, but it might not be as important as the first project was, because it was all a savings.
That's, that's true. And, and the argument is that the control systems are, are old, worn out, plagued with, with operating problems, and need to be replaced sometime. But there may not be anything magic about starting the third Monday in June of 16.
August 17th.
But, but, but you will be better positioned to decide when, when you know the scope, the cost, and the, and the legal ramifications of a decision.
Yeah, I, I just thought all, all controls were being done. I didn't even know that there was controls that weren't done the first time. I mean, so.
We'll take this time off and, and a future meeting. Thank you so much, Dave. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Planning Board discussion regarding sign bylaw, right?
How are you, Dave? I'll post some fears of everything come up or? Okay.
The, I think that there was some confusion as to why, or concern as to why we didn't get it onto this last town meeting. So we wrote it down so I can read it, so it'll make sense. Changes to the sign bylaw we are considering are not limited to only the electronic sign time limit. We want to make all the improvements to the bylaw at one time. We received comments and suggestions from the building inspector for clarifications and adjustments that we thought were needed. He thought were needed. We also considered reducing the 10-foot front yard setback requirement since there is already a section in the bylaw prohibiting signs from interfering with the sightlines for vehicular access. And it seems like all the signs are in a violation of that anyhow, so that's why we wanted to address that. All these changes have not been, and are still not fin, have not been done and are still not finalized. That's kind of the real reason why we weren't ready for that town meeting. In regards to the electronic sign, minimum time limit, I believe that the planning board met with the board of selectmen and requested that selectmen refer to an article for 10 seconds, yeah, send it for 10 seconds back to the planning board. After our meeting with your board, the board of selectmen changed the language in the article to remove the minimum time limit. And then due to the questions about changing an article, I think Mr. Purcell suggested we change that so that you can reduce the amount at Town Meeting rather than have it zero and want to increase it at Town Meeting. There was some issue that sort of stumbled, we stumbled on that a little bit and that slowed us down. And, and I think we want to go with the 10 seconds just so that we can bring it down, we don't bring it up. It's sort of a procedural thing more than anything else. If we have a, a, a public hearing and we discuss 10 seconds, or we discuss zero seconds and then later on we want to bring it up to 10 seconds, there was some issue with whether that's a valid hearing. I don't know. It was what you recommended during the earlier year.
Mr. Chairman, the, it a, I do recall mentioning that on Town Meeting Floor, any zone, on Town Meeting Floor, any zoning proposal can be amended that is, in a way that is less restrictive.
Can become less restrictive.
Can, yeah, but, you know, that the amendment makes the zoning bylaw amendment less restrictive. You cannot amend a zoning proposal on Town Meeting Floor that makes it more restrictive.
And we interpreted 10 seconds going to zero as less restrictive and zero going to 10 as more restrictive. That's what we heard.
I think, in my mind, I think the opposite, that if you, if you start from zero. Oh, no, no, I think you're right. No, you're right. 10 seconds, zero does make it less restrictive. So, so you're right. If you wanted to put.
That was the only reason we were going to stick with 10 seconds for all of our hearings and everything. Not, not that we didn't want to do zero, we just wanted to make sure that we could proceed through this whole thing once, you know.
If you went with 10, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if you went with 10, you would have the option on Town Meeting Floor of doing anything from 10 to zero. If, if you go in with zero, it's zero or nothing.
And not only Town Meeting Floor, but also the, the public hearing?
Oh, no. It can be changed on, it can be amended on Town Meeting Floor, even, even if it's had a hearing.
But we were going to go with 10 seconds consistent at our public hearing also.
Why do you have a public hearing if you can't discuss the different times?
Oh, no, we could discuss it, but the point was that we were going to present 10 seconds so that we could change it down rather than go on zero seconds and people coming in and saying, we want 10 seconds, and not being able to do that.
Town meeting, you can't change it, but your public hearing, you can change it from zero to 10.
We wanted to publish something that was consistent with what we thought was going to that, that Town Meeting.
But why do you, that, that's fine, but I, because this is my idea, because I had a bitch, because this didn't get on the Town Meeting. And we were never notified that it wasn't going to be till we get the, you know, till we get the warrant and we find out it's not on the warrant. We, we didn't know about all these other changes, you know.
Oh, yeah.
You never notified us as a board, okay? You never gave us the courtesy to tell us, listen, by the way, your request for a public hearing on the time is not going to be done at this meeting because we have other things we want to deal with with the sign law. I saw that, I'd say, well, geez, okay, maybe, you know, let's do that. And we're not going to have the public hearing.
Oh, all right.
Okay, so you never had a public hearing on the sign bylaw at all.
Right, because we didn't finish it.
Right.
It wasn't, okay, it wasn't that we didn't like going to zero seconds, so we pulled it off of the warrant. It wasn't, that wasn't the case at all. It was that we weren't done. And I apologize for not informing you that, you know, that was the case. It's just that we weren't ready to go.
I mean, when we met, it was, we asked you to look at this and you said, okay.
Yeah.
We'll have a public hearing. Sent it to you specifically requesting a public hearing on.
On a date?
On the 10 seconds, right? As I recall right here, it says, it says, Mr. McCormick explained about bylaws, a lot of electronic signs, changing if I missed. This will like to repeal the language. It was passed unanimously by the board to bring it down to zero seconds in a discussion in the sign bylaw. Consider voting. Sending it to the planning board for a public hearing. So we sent it to you for a public hearing. You didn't have a public hearing. So I don't know why we said anything, anytime, because then you arbitrarily can decide when you're going to have a public hearing or not. Right, I guess?
Absolutely.
Even though we request a public hearing. Because everything has to come to us and request a public hearing. If there's any bylaw change that comes to us, we send it to you for a public hearing, correct?
Right.
And then you can decide not to have a public hearing? Even if we asked you for a public hearing? You can request, you can decide not to have a public hearing?
We didn't decide we weren't going to have a public hearing.
But you didn't have a public hearing.
We haven't had a public hearing yet. We're still going to bring this to the, to Town Meeting, but we, we also couldn't, didn't have time to have the public hearing and everything in time to make it to the, to Town Meeting because we hadn't had our changes, other changes made. I mean, I don't think we're denying your request. We just didn't know of any, the urgency you were concerned about to make it to that Town Meeting. I apologize.
Well, that seemed pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, well, actually, we presented to you a request for the, the bylaw to be a 10-second limit. You came back, when we met with you, we talked about 10 seconds.
Right.
We left that meeting understanding it was 10 seconds, and then you discussed it when we were not there and came back and said you want it to zero.
Right.
We got that request. We then looked into the issue of whether it's less restrictive, more restrictive, and just as we were talking about earlier, if it goes to zero, if it doesn't get voted by the town, if the town doesn't like the idea of zero, we can't change it to 10. So all the changes that we're proposing, all the work that we do, the public hearings, all the work gets thrown out quickly. If we put it in at 10 seconds, then we can change it on Town Meeting Floor to zero. And then if the town wants it that way, then it can be voted that way. And it's not going to take the whole thing down with it if there's a problem with a zero or a 10. So that's what we were discussing. The timeframe when you sent it back to us didn't allow us time to have a public hearing in advance of Town Meeting by the time we had gotten that. And to answer your question of whether you refer something to the planning board, the planning board is an independent entity, elected board. So that if you send something to the planning board, we will always look at it, review it, but we do have the authority not to do what you ask us to do.
That's right. And as we have the same authority to do things. That we're not going to do. My, my question though is that because you don't want zero seconds, and we voted to put it at zero seconds, you're telling me already, and you haven't even had a hearing, that you're going to set it at 10 seconds and that's the, that's what you're going to present to the town. It's 10 seconds. You just said it. You just both said it.
We're going to present a public hearing for 10 seconds to the town. And the reasoning for it is based on the fact that what we've just said. It can be amended on Town Meeting Floor.
But it, but, so, but, so you're saying that it's going to go to Town Meeting Floor at 10 seconds? No matter what happens at a public hearing?
See what happens in the public hearing.
At the public hearing.
We start with a public hearing and we go from there. We may get some great ideas for other things or other ways to address.
Mr. Chairman.
But right now, we got to go one step at a time.
So do you have a, Mr. Chairman, thank you, do you have a date set for the public hearing yet?
It's six months bef, I believe it has to be six months before the next Town Meeting.
Yeah, we asked for a date when you need to have it, because it can't be too far in front of Town Meeting, so you have, there are certain timeframes. So we're going to try and get that from Town Council.
Before. I mean, so I think we're in there now.
Within six months, you say?
Within six months.
We think it's, yeah, we looked at it.
I think that's when we can do it again, recently.
So if you didn't have time before to have the public hearing, are you saying it was just the timing? It seems like you kind of avoided it. Let's just put it right out there. And that, as, as Mr. McCormick said, it wasn't until we saw the warrant that we found that out. So are you saying you definitely will have enough time and you are going to put it on the warrant? I do wonder if, after the public hearing, if you are open that, yes, you might change it to zero versus bringing the 10? Because I'd rather it go to Town Meeting the way it should be versus having to get amended and waiting, going through that process. Or have you, like, have you decided as a board that 10 is the way you want to go?
It's sort of a procedural thing, and I think we want to present a published document for the public hearing that says 10 seconds, so that when we get to the public hearing, if nobody likes 10 seconds at the public hearing and it goes down to zero and we feel confident that we bring zero to Town Meeting and nobody's going to want to change it, we may in fact bring zero to Town Meeting. But if we get a lot of pushback from the public during our public hearing that says, we don't want zero, because we're going to discuss it, we're definitely going to bring up your topic and discuss it at our hearing. But if everybody pushes back and we feel like it wouldn't get voted through at zero seconds and people would rather something else, we're probably going to go with what we think can get passed. I mean, that's, that's the way the public hearing is about.
And there's a whole package. There are other things associated with the change.
Oh, and there's all the other changes we're going to do.
The things that the building inspector has recommended and some other things that have been problematic in the past. So it's not just this electronic sign change. And whether it goes from 10 seconds to no seconds, it's, it's not going to really be no seconds because you can't read no seconds. And the problem that we see with that is that we're not, we don't want to see movies on these boards, on these electronic boards. So if you go to zero, then that allows the movie aspect going on. We don't want that in our bylaw. So if you set some number other than zero, that's really all that would, would stop the, the motion picture aspect of it.
I don't understand what a motion picture is.
Motion, so a picture that changes, so like a thing that is throwing a ball.
We already have stuff that says it can't have pictures and things. The bylaw already says that, though, so it, so that, that argument's.
Well, the bylaw also says it's 60 seconds to change right there.
Right, but the bylaw says, so it doesn't matter the time because it says we can't have pictures.
Well, no, it's one of those things, and those are the aspects that we're trying to cover to make it consistent.
No, there can't be pictures, so you couldn't have any animation of a picture. But you could have sort of like a picture, or imagine the end of a movie where the, the text is scrolling down. You know, like, like it's moving text all the time. You read it and it's sort of going by and going.
Well, that's scrolling. I don't know what it says about scrolling in it. We're talking about changing.
That's the same thing as zero seconds of change. You know, it could be scrolling text as it's changing every whatever, or, or like a ticker tape going by.
So now, just to, just to clarify, the 10 seconds isn't being put in because you want to go down. It's being put in. So now, just to, just to clarify, the ten seconds isn't being put in because you wanna go down, it's being put in because he's saying the board doesn't want the zero seconds. That's what he just said.
If you had zero, it's a functional-
At first, you said it was left at ten, so people could bring it down to zero, but now he's, then he's saying that, no, the board agreed that they don't-
The board is, the, the opinion of the board is the idea that we can't go, if we start at zero, we can't make changes, and if they don't like the idea of-
Zero seconds.
Zero seconds, then the whole thing gets thrown out, and we waste our time, and that's something we don't, we don't wanna do. We start at ten seconds, if that's what we like, there's reasons for it, we're gonna have a public hearing about it. If everyone comes in and is fine with no seconds, zero, then that's what we probably would go with. We're waiting for the public hearing to get input from the town.
But the public hearing, though, anything can change, up or down, it's town meeting-
Yes.
That can't change. So you could do anything, you could put it up to a minute, you could put it down to zero, you can do anything you want.
Well, actually, in the-
I thought it was sort of a similar-
Public hearing?
The public hearing notice, we can notice it and say, "We wanna change the timing for changing of electronic signs." We don't have to say we're going to ten seconds, so the-
They could go up, they could go down, it doesn't even matter.
It's, yeah, it's-
Well, we dragged the discussion.
We were trying to come up with a number-
You said you were gonna publish ten seconds.
Well, then, if they wanted a copy of the document, the document is gonna have ten seconds written in.
He's saying that it's gonna be-
It doesn't have to. It can. We haven't written it. We're going with a public hearing. If, if you folks are really wound up about it, then we can put it in.
I'd like to know what the, what the board voted, not what one, one member is asking. I, I just wanna know, you said the board said ten seconds, and that's the way they wanted to go, but he's saying, "No, we're gonna leave it just open-ended, and people can say whatever they want."
No, I didn't say that. I said we can have it.
Well, at the discussion part, they can, and we'll bring up the discussion, but we have to have a document to start with, you know, to-
He's saying he's gonna leave it just open-ended.
No, I didn't. I said we can do it either way. The board hasn't decided what we wanna do, because we're trying to get input from people.
We've agreed that it's not gonna be zero seconds when we present it, so we can come down. I mean, that, that's, that's the-
How do you get the input until we have a public hearing? You haven't had a public hearing. So you're saying we have to have a document all printed up that says numbers and all this to go to a public hearing?
Well, we have to have some of the discussion.
You're saying, wait, now Vinny says, "Oh, I gotta get the input from the people to know what, what number to write in." Well, how do you get any input if we don't have a public hearing? So why are we gonna put ten in for the public hearing, and you're saying, "Well, we're trying to get the input from the people." Where do you get the input from? At the public hearing, don't you? Isn't that where the input comes from?
Yep, and we're gonna-
So why do we have to have a number for the public hearing? Ten seconds, zero seconds, anything? Like, and as you say, we're gonna change the sign, the electronic sign by law, number, the timing. I don't know why it's such a big deal.
They took it in T A, but I was gonna put in a number, so that's something we're talking about.
Thousands of signs we have.
You can, we can work with-
Right, maybe, maybe I don't understand the whole procedure of this whole thing. If we just wanna put it forward as to zero seconds, say this is what it's gonna be.
That's exactly where I wanna go.
Okay, good.
May I, Mr. Chairman? I don't have a dog in this hunt, I don't care if it's zero, I don't care if it's ten. And the value judgments or the, you know, the arguments that are, you know, that are being made tonight really have everything to do with what you're rela, what I'm hearing has everything to do with your relative position on this, okay? Don't let it obfuscate, you know, the, the procedural requirements, okay? Chapter forty-eight, section five, okay, provides that any number of parties have standing to initiate a proposed zoning by law change. The Board of Selectmen are specifically one of those named parties, okay? And whether or not the planning board is independently elected, um, uh, and is not a, an arm or subordinate to the Selectmen, nevertheless, section five commands the planning board to hold a public hearing within sixty-five days of the submission of a proposed zoning article. You don't have to agree with it, but you have a legal, you have a lawful obligation to have a public hearing within sixty-five days of the submittal.
Submittal of what?
Of a proposed zoning change.
So when we submitted this to the-
Now, the Selectmen voted it on August fifth, I imagine it was transmitted to the, to the planning board sometime after that, that's more than sixty-five days before town meeting. Which was, what, October eighteen?
Sixty-five days before town meeting, or sixty-five days from when somebody told me to do that?
You have sixty-five days from the receipt of a, of a proposed zoning change to have a public hearing. You have no discretion in that matter, okay? Mass General Law says that, chapter forty-eight, section five, okay? The, um, now here's where you do have a certain amount of discretionary authority. The planning board is obliged to make a report to town meeting on any, uh, proposed zone changes. They have twenty-one days from the, from the conclusion of the public hearing to make that recommendation. Here's where the timing of the public hearing in town meeting are key, okay? I've seen some planning boards pocket veto certain proposals by scheduling the public hearing, say, fourteen days before town meeting. The moderator turns, says, "Do we have a report from the planning board?" And the planning board says, "No." Can't be discussed on town meeting four, because their twenty-one day period is not, is yet to expire. So the key here, if you're interested in a zoning by law proposal, make sure that a public hearing, you know, is held more than twenty-one days before town meeting.
How can you, how can you assure that? They set the schedule.
By your submission, count backwards.
We did submit it in time.
Count backwards. Your, your next town meeting date, you count backwards, twenty-one, then sixty-five, okay? And submit, you know, your zoning issue. They have to commence a public hearing within sixty-five days of their receipt of your petition.
So if we make a submission, which we already did, if we did another one right now, then it was, the clock would start today?
It could have worked, I, I think it might have worked back then. It might have, but it was, it was close, and I understand. You know, it, I get it, you know, you know, that was very close. But now you're looking forward to, you know, the May town meeting, and I'm just saying, um, you know, that's the procedure. There's no local discretion in that, but your scheduling is something that you can't, you can't control.
Prior to the town meeting.
Like that.
Or more.
Because they, because then, because then the planning board, you know, after, you know, after that twenty-one day period after the public hearing has expired, they are lawfully obliged to, to recommend yea or nay to the town meeting, okay? And it does, and even if they recommend against, it's still open for discussion.
On coming.
On town meeting.
Do I make another motion to do it now?
No, if you, if, if, if you do it now, that's sixty-five, you know, that's eighty-something days, you have, you have a whole lot-
So we already did it?
Huh? I say you just scrub this whole deal, chalk it up to a, chalk it up to a misunderstanding, but-
Well, we do it eighty-six days before the next town meeting.
If you're interested in, if you're interested in, in having this on your May town meeting warrant, as I say, count backwards.
In January.
Yeah.
You can do it in January.
That's usually the second week, that'd be the second week of February, so February, beginning of February is usually ninety days or so.
If we pass something to recommend a zero, no time limit on sign changes, chapter forty, section five, says that is what the public hearing has to be on, not, not a change, not a change to ten seconds, a change to-
That is what the public hearing has to be held on, yes, and there's no changing the, um, uh, there's no changing the public hearing notice, okay? That can only be done by the legislative body of the town ultimately, and that's town meeting, okay? Because the effective date, believe it or not, the effective date of a public hearing, I, I mean of a, of a zoning by law, if, believe it or not, developers pay very, very careful attention to this, um, is the date of the first advertisement of that public hearing. Because people try and change the, you know, that precedes the actual town meeting vote by a lot, okay? But, um, it's-
If the, when the public hearing happens, the public, alright, we had the public hearing on zero, they could come back and say, "We, we want it to be ten." They've done, they're within the law, if, if that's what happens at the public hearing.
They can make any recom, yeah, they can make any recommendation they want at town meeting.
No, at public hearing.
Oh, at a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
But if you're, you know, we'll go back to, you know, what we talked about at the, you know, at the outset of this, uh, discussion. There's more flexibility in going to town meeting with a ten spot than, than a zero, if it's flexibility that you want. If you're saying, you know, as a matter of principle, we want it zero, then go to zero, you know, but those are the rules of the game.
Absolutely.
All right, it's, but, just so, it's, it appears that you think we're, the planning board has been pushing this back. If you look at our minutes since, I think, well, since September, the minutes of the planning board have reflected that we've been trying to address this. We did look at the legal aspects, we asked town council for an opinion, we got a response back from town clerk that referred to some, uh, some of the forms in how to file. There are some requirements as to, you can't hold a public hearing too far in advance of town meeting, so that, these are all the questions the planning board was trying to address as we were going through it. And it's not as though we were trying to stonewall or not have it at the town meeting. We have a group of changes we'd like to be, that we'd like to have made to the signed by law, this was one of those. So we were trying to get it all put together and do it as one-shot deal, and have it go to town meeting as a single thing, and so we don't have to advertise three different meetings, pay for the notices, do all that labor. So that was the reason behind it. It wasn't so much that you guys wanted zero, we wanted ten, because it's, I think the point of what we're trying to do is still the same, it's just picking a number and the flexibility that we might wanna have on town meeting floor. So it's not as though we're snubbing our nose to the Selectmen, but it is knowing what the leg, legislation or what the legal requirements are, that's what we were trying to do.
I think we just need to clarify that you understand that when we present it to you, the forty-five days, sixty days.
Sixty-five.
As long as, if that's the case, then that's the way it goes, but I think in this case, you folks are gonna move forward on this public hearing.
Yeah.
If we wait till February to give it to you again, you might already have the public hearing by then.
I don't know if the public hearing will certainly be-
We need to have you give it to us, that's why, that's how this whole thing started. We have, if we wanna initiate something, which is what we did, we want it initiated from you to then come to us. We have to give it to you to refer to us to make the change. That's, that's what started this process in the beginning.
We've already done that.
I'm looking at what Kim had sent, sent out. My reading of it, it, it says that as long as town meeting is the twenty-second day after the public hearing closes, it doesn't matter if it's twenty-two days and three months, we're good to go. So I might, I could be wrong, but my reading of this is we could make, make it now, and then-
That's what I suggested.
Can we, can we do the other changes at the same time, or do we have to only do the change in time?
You can add anything to the public hearing.
We can add to the-
All the stuff we were trying, we were planning on doing?
We can do all of that, but I think there is a time limit.
I think that's right, sixty-five or more.
Where's the sixty-five come in? Because if it, if we-
No, that's what when you ask us to do it, we have to act. It sounds like that way.
Then sixty-five.
The Attorney General, in, in this, you know, in this instance, now you see that twenty-two days coincides with that twenty-one day pocket veto business I was talking about?
Yes, absolutely.
The Attorney General's office, okay, looks at, um, after town meetings, uh, they look at, um, uh, zoning bylaws, they look at by, town bylaw changes and the like. Uh, when they review zoning bylaws, they are sticklers, sticklers for procedure, okay? We can't, you know, we have to fold our cards right now, because the planning board has not held a public hearing within the sixty-five day period of, of your August fifth request, so that's gone.
So we have to start all over?
So that's why you have to start a-
Why can't we do one right now? Why can't we make a request?
Because we're too far out.
It can't be too far out.
You can do it.
If you couldn't, if you couldn't wait until January to be better, so we don't have to do it through the holidays?
You can, but if they're studying-
Oh, I, I see what you mean.
If they're taking a more, if they're taking a bigger view of the, uh, uh, signed by law, if they wanna look at, you know, a couple or three other things, you might wanna give them the latitude to do that, or, whatever.
They could have it sometime in January if we make the motion. Now, it's well within sixty-five days.
It's on our January agenda to, you know, start to keep going on this, so does somebody wanna make a motion?
To do what?
If you, if you ask today, we have to have it in like January.
Right. When, when are you guys planning on starting the public hearing process on this, or do you not have that date yet?
January, February, or something like that.
Well, what you, when you asked, you mentioned first about getting public input, we got public input, not officially, which is what the public hearing is for, but we've talked to the building inspector and to other town boards, that's where we got the input for the ten, or whatever the initial thing was. So that's where the input came in. That's what we start with, try to get feelers out there, so that we don't put something out there that's just gonna get blown out of the water.
Like we've done before.
So, so we, we're trying not to do that. There is some timeframes that we have to kind of, we always have to meet under the state. If you send it to us today, that gives us sixty days to hold a public hearing, that would probably work, because May is however many, I think it's a hundred and eighty days we have to hold a public hearing within a hundred and eighty days of the public, of the town meeting. It goes both ways, so you can't hold a meeting, a public hearing in January for fall town meeting, 'cause it's not fresh in people's memory, or whatever the reason is in the state, there's some timeframe that it has to meet. So we just need to make sure those are correct. If you look in our minutes, we've been trying to find that information out, and I don't know the information yet, but hopefully-
This isn't the first time we've done this, why don't we, we've done this many times.
Usually it is not a problem, we're thinking about it, we go through the process, and we do it.
And it just doesn't-
We're not, usually they start it. It's, it's usually the short end that we're having trouble.
Sixty-five days seems to be like the third week in January that we'd have to have the public hearing by?
Mid-February would be the latest.
But we did it in, in like the end of December.
Yeah, why don't we table this at the end of December?
We do it in December, and then it gives plenty of time, and we still got our twenty-one days.
That's really good.
We get, maybe a hearing.
The intent of the planning board is to go through and look at what we have for all the zoning changes, for the, uh, signed by laws, submit those to you after our December meeting, then you and your last or last December, early January meeting refer it back to us. So that's what our intention is right now.
And a complete copy?
No, it's just, well, it's the-
If it's controversial, if the other changes they're talking about turn out to be controversial, Mr. Chairman, you might want this as a standalone article.
Well, we can wait to get your things by the end of, maybe the end of-
We can do ours, and then they can do theirs.
December, we can do it the end of December with the-
We'll schedule it for the last meeting in December.
And then hopefully we'll have your changes by then, too.
If you were to do that, do we have to have two hearings?
Yeah, but you hold them concurrently.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it so much.
Okay, we'll hear from you in December.
Okay. Have a good day.
You, too.
See you next Christmas. And thanks for hurrying upstairs.
All right, town administrator's first committee selection. Uh, previous committee, five members, you have personnel board, department head, and two residents. So Mary Jean, here, fire?
Here.
Yeah, okay. Personnel board.
Is she willing to come back?
Are you willing to do it again?
Can the three, I think the three current members have-
Three current members? Yeah, why don't we do that?
You want them all, same time?
Louise is not doing it.
Louise, you're-
You're not doing it, Louise?
So these are the two members that are left from the committee.
We're gonna need a, okay.
Dennis is gonna do the-
Dennis is gonna do the, nice to volunteer.
What we wanna talk about is that if we want to, if we, well, I'll speak for myself, I don't wanna speak for Ray, but it, there's no point in doing, in my doing this again if we're gonna follow exactly the same process, because we didn't get, we didn't get a new town administrator. We, for the committee side, and I was the chair of the committee, we followed a pretty good process that vetted the candidates that we saw. You know, I think, you know, we started out with nineteen, lost some people to other jobs, and ultimately presented you with two candidates and two alternates. And in that process, we truly did vet those candidates in terms of their background, in terms of pre-screening, in terms of references. And to not, to not be able to present somebody that, or to not get somebody passed the Selectmen, I think was, was fairly, is fairly frustrating. So what's gonna be different about what we do this time? Is, is there something that you're suggesting, or your involvement with the committee, that's gonna be different, so that we can get the result to get the town, the new town administrator?
I'm, President, based on my, I was comfortable in the, uh, questions.
Can I ask, can I ask, who set the process?
The committee.
Your committee.
The committee set the process.
So I guess when, when five members are picked, you folks can set your process again. But I don't think, I don't think you can set our process on what we're gonna do after you send us the names.
Well, that's exactly the point. We can control our process, we cannot control your process.
Correct.
Mary Jane, do you have anything to suggest that you would like to see happen besides get, you know, a candidate passed amongst us? Because you've got an expertise in this area.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there something that you could suggest?
Yeah, and I, and I heard, one of the comments was that the, none of the candidates got passed. And I think a couple of things would help. One is to get very specific feedback about why the candidates didn't pass. If it was about backgrounds, history, whatever, you know, their previous employment. And I'll point to Louise, who was an incredible researcher for us of getting stuff on the internet. We truly did dig deep into these candidates before we presented them. We were gonna give you somebody that wasn't gonna be a suitable candidate. So that's number one, is to get that feedback. What did you, what was appropriate about the candidate, what was not? Very specific, not just didn't like them, didn't like the address, you know, they came late, whatever. And then secondly, perhaps we need to spend more time, the US election needs to spend more time than one session with each, with the candidates that you vet we present. Because in that, and I don't know if you spent a half hour, hour, hour and a half, whatever, but I think between all of us, we probably spend three or four hours with each person. Between phone calls, pre-screening, talking with them, bringing you in, getting your feedback, what do you want? You know, so that's what we need. But first and foremost is what did you, what was, what was, that was wrong? What was not appropriate about those candidates that you saw? Specifics.
Is it appropriate or not?
And I don't know, and you don't have to tell, I mean, if that's inappropriate.
Do you have a meeting with each one of us?
Sure, absolutely. I'd love to hear that because we, you know, we've got five personalities. We've got, you know, five different, five different people that we, that we want to present these candidates to, but ultimately it's for the town. You know, you're representing them. So I've done a lot of talking, you talk.
I have no problem talking. You know, the reality is, I mean, the candidates were presented, as Mary Jane has indicated, we went through in great detail. I think fundamentally, the process that you took, which was about a half an hour, forty-five minutes with a candidate, isn't going to give you the answers that you really need. So I, I mean, my opinion, take it as you will, either way. Certainly the candidates that were forward were qualified. And for all five of you to not so much as to have a question about any one of them for any particular reason, I, I find mind-boggling. So it basically means that all five of you found none of the candidates viable. It either says that we were looking for something that you didn't want and we spent a lot of time with each of you individually, as well as all the rest of the parties involved in defining the characteristics of the candidate that you're looking for. Or something changed after those things were defined. Or maybe you, you thought you were looking for one thing and you decided it was something else you're looking for.
I did totally disagree with you that we didn't spend enough time with them because I read their information. And in each specific case, when I sit down with you, I'll tell you why. I didn't need to spend, I didn't, some, a couple of them, I didn't need to spend half the amount of time I spent before I was gonna vote no for them. So some of them, I think I spent too much time with. And you didn't think I spent enough. Because I guess maybe I didn't make it clear enough when I had my meeting with you as to what I thought we needed. But, I don't know, I've been here a long time and I've dealt with a lot of different, I've dealt with everybody we've ever had. And it just didn't cut the mustard. So, and I wasn't gonna be hanging with any of them. So that's why I made the motion not to select any of them. But I'll be really happy to sit down and tell you why.
Yeah, I think the town's in a unique position. We've had very few town administrators, you know, and so you're, we're in a very unique spot in that the experience that, that we've had with the longevity of the town administrators that we have, it is, is good on the one hand, but then when you try to replace that longevity, it's difficult because you're, it's a different person.
See, I think I have a different perspective than everybody because I dealt with both of them. And they were totally different people. And I spent four years with the first one, ten years with the next one. And now, and believe me, no one wanted a new town administrator more than me, quickly. I mean, Mr. Ruchel and I had many arguments about that during it. I said, we need to do this quick. And he said, no, we need to do it a little slower. We need to make sure we find the best candidate. And I went, no, we need to do it tomorrow. So I wanted somebody right away, but I just didn't feel comfortable.
I would suggest that, I like the idea of sitting down one-on-one or two, however, and talk about the candidates. And then after that, I think it would be a really good idea that maybe you come back to us and say, this is what we heard you're looking for. Because that way, we're all on the same page at that particular point. And I would think that would help you guys and put us all thinking about the same way. And then if there is some question, we'd know before you got into the interview part. And we could either have more discussion on it or, you know, do a little bit more research on what we're looking for. And especially where, like you said, there are five of us. You know, we're not all gonna agree on the same person either, as you well know. But I think that would help us to really focus down on what we are agreeing to be looking for at that point.
And I think that's a great suggestion. And one of the suggestions that I would make is that after we met with all of you, we actually sat down as a group and came up with, what are the, what is this group looking for? What are the questions we're going to ask? If that's gonna help to say, okay, this is what we're gonna ask these candidates. You know, and do you agree with that these are the things we're going to ask? As long as we can get consensus, that's fine. But I do go back to, we do need to know what was not right about the other candidates. Yes.
Absolutely. I will tell you, for what it's worth, the feedback we got from each of you individually wasn't that divergent.
It was not that diverse.
So it's, it's not as if it took rocket science to calculate what the characteristics were that you were looking for. So it causes me maybe more consternation than not.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, I do have to say that also, we did, I wouldn't say the process was, we didn't rush through the process. I know you felt that we didn't rush through the process because we felt that towards the end, we were really trying to push and get everybody in. I, you know, given the timing of the holidays, et cetera, we've got to expect that this is gonna be a process. But on the other hand, we don't wanna lose anybody because we did lose some candidates at the beginning.
Right.
So.
So that would be my suggestion.
That being said, would you people still want to serve?
Yeah, I'll do it.
I like how she makes.
That was awfully easy.
I know, but I felt, but as long as I could, you know, as long as we can figure out what was not there, I can, I can make it work. That's important.
No problem sitting down and going over the candidates.
And I, and I just think that when you put on, if you folks decide to stay, one already, we're not gonna let her go back on that, she already said she wants to.
Strike that for the record, please.
If you folks say you wanna stay, then, then your group should decide how the process works, not anything that's decided right now. You guys should all sit and say, maybe that's not the process we wanna go.
If this is the only group, I think.
Right now, it's only the two of you, so there could be three members.
Very quickly. There may just be one right now. And I think the process is great.
So I would ask you, what are the expectations for timeline, number of candidates to be identified? You're basically asking us, in this past round, we invested about thirty to forty hours each. And you're asking us to invest that time between now and the end of the year, I assume? Through the holidays, so.
Twenty-seven.
I don't really think you can do it before the end of the year.
No.
I don't think it's possible.
Realistic.
Thanksgiving week, these next, this whole month is gone. The committee's not even together yet. December, you know, two weeks are gone.
We're probably looking.
End of January, maybe, end of January?
Mid, mid, end of January.
I'd say, and there's no way.
And I think out of those candidates, there's probably people that, that we already saw or probably can just say, no, they don't meet the qualifications.
Right, especially after you have conversations with us.
Or, yeah, and/or just looking at qualifications compared to what the job is.
Right.
Ready?
All right, I'll, I'll serve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both.
Just so you know, December, we love the me. So just call us, we'll be down here.
Oh, we'll get you.
That's because we were talking about December meetings in the beginning of the meeting.
Trying to not have so many.
Not have so many.
Every year we end up having like.
I would also like to make a request, which is completely within your control. After whatever candidates are identified or handed off, I would ask that you keep us apprised of what's happening? Times that you're gonna be interviewing people? I found out that the candidates had all been discredited when one of the candidates called me to tell me. I didn't even know it was on your agenda to vote.
We will make sure you, you enter a request first.
I think you can appreciate that's rather profoundly demotivating.
Okay. Thank you.
And we like to be motivated.
Right, we'll fix that.
All right, so Louise, you were not gonna be on.
Come on, Louise.
Dennis? You're not in.
As the town, is that why you're hiding in the corner? As the town rep?
So you will serve?
Yeah, I had the same kind of questions that they have. That's why I asked him to step on the hallway, that I wanna know what the process is and how many of those twenty-seven are repeats from the nineteen that were not. I assume what you can look at because they were rejected the first time. So do we have a good pool of candidates to even do this process? That was my question.
I guess you guys could figure that out relatively quickly and come back to us right away and say, you probably should do this again right away because we can't find anybody to give you. I mean, if you felt that there was no candidates, right?
We got down to about six, three people, right?
I'm in, I think he means in this group.
Yeah, this group, yeah, just to see if there's repeat names.
Right.
But we don't know that answer. We don't know those answers yet because there's, no.
We don't see those.
So there's three repeats out of this, so there's twenty-four new people. And make a motion to appoint Dennis Minnick as the department head.
Second.
Follow the paper.
Aye.
For the town.
Thank you, Dennis, for serving. We appreciate it.
Is there anybody else?
Thank you, guys. All right, now we're gonna interview Mr. Ryan, Ms. Ackland will not go to join us again. Newell, please.
I have five applicants.
Yeah, uh, all right.
High-county, no worries.
Let them individual.
All right. You wanna do one on time?
Yeah.
Dave, you wanna come up first? Dave, can you?
Mr. Spiel, you wanna do this?
I think it's very important. This is, you know, we're getting close to the fiscal year seventeen budget. And I think we need to have somebody in place. You know, Mr. Gomond did a great job. And I was here for, when we interviewed the last four candidates. And I, actually, I put my name in the first time. And so when this came around again, I decided to do it again. Like I said, I serve on a bunch of committees now and, you know, this is, this is very important, you know.
What do you think the most important job of a town administrator is?
Keeping the board of selectmen in line. No, I, you know, just, just overall, you know, making sure that everything runs smoothly. I mean, he's got a great, you know, administrator to work with as far as Nancy. But, you know, taking care of the budget, you know, all the little problems. I know Mr. Gomond had a bunch of different hats at certain times. So, you know, it's, you know, making sure that everything runs smoothly, you know, and making sure that the board of selectmen knows exactly what needs to be done, you know, and what's going on and stuff. And that's why we have, you know, town administrator report, you know, to let you guys know what's going on and stuff. And we're closely with you and we're closely with Nancy and, you know, all the other boards and committees.
What qualifications, Dave, do you bring to the table for this?
Well, I, when I was in the service, I, I did a lot of interviewing with, you know, as far as interviewing with, you know, people that I had to work with and also interviewing with people that had to, vendors, basically. I had to deal with a lot of vendors in my job and stuff, so. And, you know, I deal with a lot of people, you know, customer services been in my blood for like the last forty-five years, so.
Thank you. Larry Chisby. Larry, how are you?
Good, how are you this evening?
Very good. How's life still?
Sure, well, I'm a new resident of West Wilson. Been here about a month and a half now, I think. Originally from, actually originally from Framingham, but lived in Westboro for the past twelve years. So getting used to my new home. And very nice, a nice town.
Any experience in job-related, something, association, something like that?
Yes, I guess probably the short answer I would probably give you, my profession actually is in staffing and recruiting. So there's a lot of similar discussion topics that I've heard this evening and actually had the opportunity to review some of the videos on the interviews of the candidates. At some point, we'll probably inquire about any questions on as to why those individuals passed on. But just to get an understanding of really what looking for and so forth. But in general, that's what I do. Part of it is trying to understand both what a particular job requires and skill sets that are needed to be successful in that and to do what I can to try and find the right person that will fit those requirements.
I'm the question queen, what can I say? Somebody has to be.
Yeah, no problem.
So you, so you've been here like a month and a half, is that what I heard?
But going on a month and a half now, so.
So in your short term here, what do you think a strength of a town administrator should be? And why would you be interested in serving on this committee?
Sure, I'll give you a two-part answer to that on a personal level. And this is in no particular order, but, you know, as I'm getting older in life, I find that there's a certain value in just participating in government, you know, whether it be local, you know, whether it be just simply voting. So I've come to kinda understand that as an important part of my day-to-day life. Part of it is maybe a rub-off from my dad, who was a retired police officer from the town of Framingham. So I've always had some connection to local government and in service. The other part is that, and probably largely influenced by my time in Westboro and living out in the Midwest for a time, that one of the things that draws me to the community that I picked to live is, you know, how personal it is and how the people in that community interact with one another. And I believe that it's important that if there's a certain personality to a community and I feel I can add to try and support or encourage that value that, you know, it's probably my responsibility to get involved at any level that I can. So this is a way of doing that. Actually, my wife saw the notice on your website first, brought it to my attention, but I thought it was definitely something that both was worth my time and within an area that I think I can offer some expertise in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Susan Colleen? Hi, Susan, my wife.
I will, how are you?
Very good.
Been here twenty-five years. Let's see, disabled, so I haven't worked in a while, but I have one daughter. I'm not sure what else she really wanted to know about me.
Experience in this field at all or any?
No, no, so. But I think I can bring a fresh perspective to it and I'm not being in that whole thing.
Can I ask you why this particular item, to come forward with it? We have other boards and stuff, but what is it about this one that drew your attention?
I thought it'd be a nice stepping stone into getting back into the community. My daughter graduated from college this past May and she went out of state. But until that point, I was pretty active in town. I was a substitute teacher at the school. And I think everyone who has kids, their kid probably goes, I know you. probably goes, "I know you." But you find that, once your child leaves home, and you don't have a job, you're kinda locked inside your own prison, and you don't really know what's going on. And when the email came, I thought, hm, yeah, I think I could do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, it's... Different perspective.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. You think I'm gonna say the name?
No. I was hoping.
Try to say my full name, I guess. Hi.
I don't...
Good, thank you. As you know, you know, I'm a scientist, as well as a, I do manage lab, research lab for several years. With that, you know, I do have to deal with people, interview. So I can say, you know, I have an interviewing skill. I am board member for a couple of boards, and I do involve with several other boards, go to the meetings and all. So I'm here for a long, for a while. So with this, I do know what we are looking for in a town administrator, clearly. And lastly, you know, I was following the last town administrator, the four candidates. What I thought was, you know, beyond, I know that they said, you know, they did some research. I'm not saying, you know, they didn't, I'm not disputing that. But beyond the resume, as well as the interview, we do, our town needs to know their background, which needs, again, you know, we need to know the, we need to research them, whether they have a lot of baggages, coming with a lot of baggages. We don't want that. So I can do the research, that's what.
No, I'm gonna let...
You want to make, you get the first question?
I'm good at this stuff. Well, be quiet. So anyway, so I am concerned about the amount of boards that you're on, and how you would have enough time to really devote, as you heard it.
Actually, no, there are only...
And my second part is, if you've already made up your mind as what you think, you just stated to us you want as a town administrator, without having conversations, I have some, I am concerned with that statement as well. So you need to explain.
You know, we, we, without consulting is, I, I, I think, you know, I lived enough in this town. I have seen the town administrator job, that's what I'm referring. What kind of town administrator we need. And also, you know, I have listened to all the interviews, and I have seen, and I read, I did some research on all four candidates, last, last four candidates. And I do know why all four candidates maybe are, they didn't select.
Okay. And what about the, you're on so many boards, how would you have enough time?
Only two boards are active boards, all other boards are dummy boards. All other boards are not very active.
Okay. And do you have any experience interviewing people for...
That's what I...
That's what you said, that you...
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay, okay.
Kevin, anything?
No, I'm good.
Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Beth?
You didn't wanna say Jubalina?
I don't want to say that.
Jubalina's an easy name to say.
Just say G.I.O.Balina.
Hello, I'm Beth Jubalina, I've lived in town for thirty-two years. And I, I saw this in the banner, and I'm like, this might be something I'm interested in. And it's not a full-time, like, a yearly thing, it's only for a few months, so I can try it out to see, you know, maybe I'd like to go on a planning board, or something like that, but this is only for, you know, get my feet wet in this. But, and I've worked in customer service, I've worked at a local bank, customer service for over, for fifteen years, but I've never done any interviewing. I just come in contact with people and...
You asking? So what is one of your strengths, working with people in the customer service area? Because you are gonna meet different people, so how would you find one of your strengths or discuss one of your strengths with that?
One of my strengths? I can talk to anybody. And I can get anything out of you, if, if I have to. So I think I could get to what you really are like.
Okay.
And, you know, I think I could do that.
Okay. And what is one thing that you think the town administrator should be able to do as a strength, as that position?
I think the town administrator has to be the eyes and ears of the town, and has to be, and not involved in anything, but just make sure he has his finger on what's happening in the town. So, you know, if something comes up, he is aware of everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So now we've had the thing, it's...
What are you doing, nominating?
I'd like to nominate, um...
Go ahead, no, I like this one.
Um, I'd like to nominate Larry, is it Chisholm, is that how you say it?
That's right, yes, Chisholm. Second?
I agree, I think, I think you're right.
Yeah, I think...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'd like to nominate Beth Jubalina for the second position. Aye.
No.
No.
Guys have it.
Have you really just?
Yes.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Should we get more spots?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming forward.
She knows it.
We done? I make a motion, we adjourn? Are you done?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.